Palaka City Commission Meeting for October 11th, 2018. We'll have our invocation by Reverend James Vickery, Pastor of New Mount Tamao Missionary Baptist Church. Reverend Vickery will be also lead us in the pledge. Let everyone please stand at this time.
Let us pray. Father in heaven, great and powerful and full of love, I lift up my heart in praise for the privilege of coming to you in prayer tonight. Lord, our highest good is to have you near, search our hearts. Lord, ensure us if anything is hindering us, to keep us from serving you in our lives. Give us special grace as we exalt you tonight in prayer. Lord, our highest good is to have you near and know how wonderful that you want us to come near to you and that you do like to see our face and hear our voice. How good of you, gracious master, to call all of these elected officials to serve as your ambassadors of all that they do? How encouraging to know that every task that they undertake as your servants is your work, even the smallest task. And that Father, through prayer, they will put you into all of their daily activities. And I pray that they will commit all that they do into your hands. And I ask that you would give, you would work in and through them. Give them grace to do each of their tasks for you, putting their whole heart into it, keeping them dependent on you for strength and wisdom. Help them to make the right decisions in all that come before them tonight. We ask this in your precious Son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Our Commander Sergeant, Command Sergeant Major Vickery will lead the pledge.
Thank you Pastor Command Sergeant Major.
Pastor Vickery, in your vast capacities, and thank you for all the work that you've done for this city throughout the years and our country. Moving on, roll call please.
Mayor Terrell Elville.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mary Lawson Brown. Commissioner Rufus Borum.
Present.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Here.
All members of the President's Accountant Board, we have a forum.
Thank you very much. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from both the 9/27 meeting and the June 23 budget workshop? There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Borum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item one of the agenda, which is public recognitions and presentation. First up is domestic violence awareness month. Lee Conley House. Also PBD, Ms. Edwards. Don't be shy. Proclamation reads as follows. Whereas domestic violence is a crime that impacts all citizens of Putnam County and its impact is wide ranging and taking dramatic toll on the criminal justice, law enforcement, the healthcare community, and the society as a whole each year in Putnam County. An estimated one in four women and one in seven men are victims of domestic violence, which translates to 13,100 individuals affected in our county based on recent census data. Whereas it is vital for our community to support the victims of domestic violence and assist with their great financial, physical, and psychological losses to impose legal sanctions against perpetrators of personal violence and to help the batteries unlearn their abusive behavior. And whereas Lee Conley House is the only certified domestic violence center in Putnam County providing 24-hour hotline shelter and other needed services and counseling to victims and their families. It has been awarded certification through Florida's Department of Children and Families. Whereas the Palaka City Commission endorses and supports all programs sponsored by Lee Conley House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families, thereby assisting in the elimination of domestic violence in our community. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with members of the Palaka City Commission who hereby proclaim the month of October 2018, is hereby designated Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Palaka. And we urge all citizens to participate and plan activities in effecting the Lee Conley House in its mission to provide shelter and support services to victims of domestic violence and their families and support its goals of creating a community with zero tolerance of domestic violence. And with this whereof, here to set my hand and calls to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 11th day of October in the year of our Lord 2018, Terrell Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, now entertain a motion. There's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. I want to present this to you.
It occurred to me just today that this year is 20 years that Lee Conley House has been sheltering survivors of domestic violence. It was in 1998 that the group of concerned citizens were come together and we were able to purchase our first shelter. It was a small three-bedroom house that sheltered eight women. Through the years, through the community's support, the support of the city and the county, we have grown to a 28-bed shelter. So that tells us two things, that the community's support is obviously very, very important. And secondly, that through our awareness programs, the Domestic Violence Awareness Month and getting our name out into the community, people are feeling empowered to come forward seeking shelter. So that is very important. And we are honored to have the Palaka Police Department with us tonight and the support of the Police Department, our wonderful ward members, the Lee Conley House advocates, the support of the Sheriff's Department, the State Attorney's Office. We are so honored to have such a supportive community to help us through transitioning these ladies into a life free of violence and full of success. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you so much.
I just wanted to introduce a couple of ladies, Melissa Miller. She is our President of Lee Conley House Board of Directors this year. Lori Slaven, who is now the Executive Director. She has come up, I can remember when Lori first started, many moons ago. And then she left us for a while, she came back, and she's just been appointed the Executive Director for Lee Conley House, and we're very proud of both these ladies.
Thank you.
And so again, thank you. We had an opportunity on October 5th to, and we'll take a break for recess and I can take some photos. But we had an opportunity on October 5th to participate in pledging purple in support of survivors of domestic violence. All throughout the community, all throughout the country, we see people pledging purple in support of Domestic Violence Month. Many people are aware that October is a month for breast cancer awareness, but we want to make sure that we also allow those to support by pledging purple and wearing purple throughout the month in support of survivors of domestic violence as well. I want to thank the Sheriff's Office, the City of Palaka, and the Republican Advocate as well as the State Attorney's Office and the College participating in these events and all throughout the community. We encourage you throughout October to continue to pledge purple. And so again, thank you. Next up, World Polio Day. Palaka Rotary and Palaka Sunrise Clubs, $1. We have other members from the Rotary as well here. We've got multiple capacities. Chief.
Showed up the wrong day. Anybody else missed?
Can you get the rotary into the back?
Anybody want to join?
Yeah.
This proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Rotary International, founded on February 23rd, 1905 in Chicago, Illinois, is the world's first and one of the largest nonprofit service organizations with over 1.2 million Rotary Club members comprised of professional and business leaders in over 35,000 clubs in 200 countries. And whereas the Rotary motto, "Service Above Self", inspires members to provide mandatory service, encourages high ethical standards, and promote goodwill and peace in the world. And whereas in 1985 Rotary launched Polio Plus and spearheaded the Global Polio Eradication Initiative, which today includes the World Health Organization, U.S. Centers of Disease Control and Prevention, UNICEF, and Bill and Melinda Gates Foundations, ammunition to children of the world against polio. And whereas polio cases have dropped by 99.9% since 1988, and the world stands on the threshold of eradicating the disease. And whereas today Rotary has contributed more than $1.7 billion in countless volunteer hours to protection of more than 2 billion children in 122 countries, and is currently working to raise an additional $150 million, which if realized, will be tripled by the Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation for a total of $450 million over the next three years. And whereas Rotary's efforts provide much-needed operational support, medical personnel, equipment, and educational materials for health workers and parents. In addition, Rotary has played a major role in decisions by donor government to contribute more than $8 billion to the effort. And whereas there are over 250 Rotary Club members in four clubs throughout Putnam County sponsoring service projects to address such critical issues as poverty, health, hunger, illiteracy, and environment in their local communities and abroad. Now therefore, I, Terrell Hill, Mayor of the City of Palaka, Florida, together with the members of the Palaka City Commission, hereby endorse and proclaim Wednesday, October 24th, 2018, as World Polio Day in the City of Palaka, and encourage all citizens to join myself, the officials, and the staff in the City of Palaka and Rotary International in the fight for a polio-free world. And with this hereof, I'm here to set my hand and calls to be affixed the seal of the City of Palaka, Florida, on this 11th day of October in the year of our Lord 2018. Terrell Hill Mayor, Mary Lawson Brown, Rufus Borum, Justin Campbell, and Tammy McCaskill, Commissioners, now entertain a motion.
So move.
There's a motion and a second on the floor, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. We want to present you with this proclamation.
I want to hear Dr. Harris speak, he's the President of the new club. Tina Robinson from the Sunrise Club. Dr. Harris, President of the new club. Melissa Miller in the new club. Paul's the new club. And Chief Shaw, the new club. My Sunrise people must be tired. A lot of the details are in the proclamation, but as of today for the year, there's only two countries that have seen the polio virus, Afghanistan and Pakistan. Those of us in the U.S. are blessed that we don't really understand polio anymore, but it is still in the world. There are 19 cases so far year-to-date in the world, which is amazing. And we're literally this close, we have an ad campaign this close to being eradicated. It'll be the second disease ever eradicated from the face of the earth, smallpox being the first. So we're getting close, we'll be there. Rotary does good things, we'll get it done, and we'll move on to the next project.
Next up, Mr. Hampshire, Sons of American Revolution. He's got a special presentation for us.
Here, I'll just have you read it. Thank you very much. Good evening, elected officials.
Good evening.
Mayor Hill, our guests, family and friends. My name is Jerry Hampshire, and I am the President of the Sons of the American Revolution for St. John's and Putnam County. I did have a compatriot that was going to join me tonight, but he's not here. But anyway, for the ones that don't know anything about the Sons of the American Revolution and what we do, the SAR, as we are known, was founded in 1889. It is a patriotic, historical, and educational society conceived as a fraternal and civic society of the lineal descendants of those patriots who fought for or supported the cause of American independence. The basic tenets of our society are to perpetuate the people, events, and the American Revolution; to maintain the institutions of American freedom; to promote fellowship among the descendants of the Revolutionary War patriots; and to seek out and recognize those individuals who have demonstrated outstanding public service to the community and their home. One of the most important institutions of the American way of life is the Fire Safety Rescue Department, which provides safety to our citizens and structures to our way of life. Our Chief Grimes contacted us with the recommendation for the National Society Sons of the American Revolution Fire and Safety Commendation Award. We're here tonight to honor firefighter Robert Moore. For his professionalism, attention to detail, and significant department accomplishments. Before I give this to him, I'll just read what Chief Shaw, or Chief Grimes wrote about him. Since he came to the department in 2010, firefighter Moore has distinguished himself with his dedicated, hard-working, dependable, and can-do attitude. If he says he will do something, you know it will be done. He has excelled as the instructor of the Urban Search and Rescue Program, Special Operations Training, and his integrity is always impeccable. And that's pretty important to me. So here I, this has got camera. Who has talent enough to turn this, you know, we can win one way or the other. Oh, you've got fun, okay, yes. I'd like to present this with you, and this is for firefighter Robert Moore, Fire Safety Commendation Award in recognition for the accomplishments and outstanding contributions to protect human life, property, and preventing injuries and casualties to the fire. Thank you very much. Well, thank you tonight, and I forgot to mention that it is a distinct honor, I feel like I'm the outsider here, I have to say it, to be invited by the mayor of this fine city. Appreciate recognizing and providing a award to some of your people over here. Thank you again, I appreciate it.
They get younger with the time, too.
I'm just super proud of Robert. I mean, he's one of those guys, I mean, you look back and you try to pinpoint something. You know, he's the guy that spearheaded this ability for us to go get all of our Christmas presents last Christmas for all the children throughout the community, and he did a backpack program. He took such, you know, drive to go get those things done. And when you're looking for somebody to give one of these awards, so you're like, you know what? This guy just really gets it. I mean, he does a fantastic job, he comes to work every day with a smile on his face, he works hard. The other day, we sent him out to the west coast of Florida. He did it on his own time, went out and trained some people in the Panhandle that just got hit. They just did a volunteer weekend out there, he spent a whole weekend on his own. Now they're training them to do firefighting activities. So I mean, when you're looking for somebody, it's just hard to look past people like him. I mean, he just does such an outstanding job day in and day out. And I just like to say, from the fire department, how proud we are of it. So, thank you.
Chief, we've got some trees down over there.
He's a guy for it. That includes all of our public recognitions and presentations. Let's take a brief recess so that we can take photographs. Take some discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? If there is anyone who wishes to speak during public comment, please fill out a yellow speaker's card. I'm getting my claim in. So that we will have all your information for the record. Mr. Miller, you see what you did? First up is Tate Miller. Just give me your name and address for the record.
Hello, sir.
Welcome.
Thank you, Tate Miller, 603 Main Street, Florida. This morning, I just happened by chance to be witness to a police action down in the waterfront. And it was serious enough and impressive enough to where I thought it would be nice to make a public comment on this. You know, police often take kind of a beating in the public domain sometimes. But the police action that I witnessed this morning was actually incredible. I saw them wrestling and dealing with a very complicated and dangerous situation down in the waterfront, and I've never seen a police department act more professionally or show more patience when in fact they had many opportunities to push back on this particular person. It was kind of sad and tragic, but I just wanted to say that police acted incredibly professionally, and I think it would have made the entire community proud to have seen it.
Thank you very much.
Can I just get you to introduce yourself to the community and let me say a little bit about?
Sure.
And so, for those who don't know Tate Miller, I'll actually let Mr. Miller talk a little bit, just briefly, about how he came to Palaka. I got an opportunity to hear his story about how he came to Palaka and what made him truly make this community whole, and really to invest in the community and to become someone who's really a part of the transcending and the restoration of the Jim and the St. Johns. And so if you can, just kind of give us a synopsis and just kind of introduce yourself to the community as well, and I just appreciate your words and your vision for what you have, you see in this community.
Thank you very much. I'll be brief. My wife and daughter, I moved here about four years ago from California. And when I tell people that I moved here from California, especially if we moved from Cornell, the first question is, why? And I always now just say, well, why not? Because the more I learned about Palaka, I know there were a lot more reasons for me to move here than I knew at the time, but my basic reason at the time, I have a lot of old family in this area. I grew up on this coast until I was 19, I moved to California. And as we were aging, my brothers and sisters said, "We're not moving west, you're moving east." And I always had liked the St. Augustine area, and I didn't want to live in St. Augustine. I wanted to live close to it. And I literally picked up a map one day, and I thought, well, once near St. Augustine. And I looked at Gainesville and St. Augustine, and just thought that this little river town named Palaka was right there, and I began to do some research on it and on the county. And this was four years ago, and the statistics on the county were not impressive. As you guys all know, all too well, changed a lot since then, but I had had some things that really intrigued me. I also did some real estate investment, and I thought this area is at some point wanting to regenerate and explode, and that was the trigger for me. I also wanted to live in Holywater, St. John's River. I wanted to live in a community to bring, my daughter was nearing ninth grade at the time, I wanted her to be in a really nice community. So for a number of reasons, primarily economic, personal reasons because of family, we made the move here. And once I was here, I began to learn more about Palaka and decided to do some investing, and we bought a couple buildings. I had a place outside of town, a place in Burton Pope. And I had moved down to Holywater for a year to do a special project. I worked for a university and done a project down there, was coming back. And I was looking at buying another piece of property. And one day, I looked at a real estate feed, and it said eight bedrooms, six and a half bed, potential bed and breakfast, of whom we drove up the next day. Bought this house that was now the Grand Cables and Bed and Breakfast. And we worked nine months to get it open, opened with a little fanfare, and part of our head come and save us from a lightning strike on the day, but we survived that. And I became even more positive on Palaka, the cause of results of our experience at the D and D. So we recently just bought the Hotel James, and our goal and vision there is to take the Hotel James and return it to its original grandeur of 1916. And I'm sorry, I think that's a long story.
So you've just got a snippet of an extraordinary young man who's come and made Palaka home. It's always interesting when you get both Bed and Breakfast Visionaries in the same room who have a vision for Palaka, neither one are natives, but they just love this community.
The same story.
And we are excited about it, and definitely the same story. And so we're definitely excited about having both of you in the community and the work that you guys do. Again, just thank you both for seeing Palaka in the eyes that you see it from. Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda, has everyone had an opportunity to review the consent agenda? There's a motion to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Vice Mayor Brown. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on, item four of the agenda is our capra. It's Presentation and Acceptance of the Fiscal Year 2016-17 Audit and Comprehensive Angle Financial Report. Tina Robinson and John Rowe from Car Rigs in Ingram.
I'm Tina Robinson with Car Rigs in Ingram. Our office is at 906 South State Road, Montana. And as Mayor said, I want to give you a summary of the financial statement audit results for the year ending September 30, 2017. Our auditors' opinions on those financial statements are that they are fairly stated in all material respects. For each of your 10 opinion units, we have to do, actually do kind of separate, audit each of those separately to give an opinion. In your NBN A section, I'll just point out, if you, you know, would like to look at it later on pages 19 and 20, there's a government-wide comparison prior year to, or 17 to 16. So you can kind of see, you know, what the city looks like for those two years together. Your net position or equity for the governmental is about $304,000 higher than in 16 before the restatement. And the business-type activities, which is the same as all of your enterprise funds, is about $192,000 lower than the previous year before the restatement. And then moving on to your fund statements, your general fund, downtown redevelopment, CDVG, the golf course and the airport funds, all increased their fund balances for the year of 2017. The downtown redevelopment fund, I'll mention specifically because that one is required to be audited separately by the state as a major fund. It carries a cumulative fund balance of about $895,000, which is about $91,000 higher than the year before that. And those statements, financials for that downtown fund is pages 3, 5, and 48, 48 in the budget. Your tax increment funds that were expended from that fund were $121,000 approximately, and in addition to $105,000 in transfers. And then as far as your capitalizable assets, you expended about $2.9 million. And that included things like your airport improvements, your riverfront improvements, terminal, the playgrounds, sidewalk improvements, and a generator for some of your bigger items. You also took out two capital leases during that year, including a sanitation truck and a fire medical truck, and you paid down about $1.4 million in debt. The budgets, I'll go back to that, on page 48, the downtown redevelopment fund budget, you'll see there in the middle of the page that the expenditures for that one were well within the approved budgeted expectations. And then on the page before that, the general fund budget, also you spent well within your budget, your approved budget. For that year, the city spent $1.2 million in federal grant funding and $420,000 in state grant funding. So the federal grant expenditures, they're listed on page 85, those reached the threshold that required a separate federal single audit. And your major grants this year were the FAA Airport Improvement Grant and the EPA Brownsville Assessment Grant. Brownsville Assessment Grant. Both of those grant programs received clean opinions. We saw no errors in those grants. We did have one quarterly report for the Brownsville that was submitted late to the grantor, and you'll see that noted on page 93. And then in our other reports, on page 80, this is a management letter required by the Florida Auditor General. And they require us to look at certain things. Partly, they're asking us to look at five financial condition assessment procedures to see if you meet the definition of financial emergency or a deteriorating financial condition. And after applying those procedures, the city does not meet either of those conditions. You're not in either of those conditions, so you're fine. We did see that the aggregate deficit in unrestricted net position of the enterprise funds, most of that's because of your net pension liabilities that you have to accrue on your books. So there's a deficit there in aggregate, but that is sufficiently covered by your unrestricted net position resources and other funds. However, as we usually do, just advise that you continue to have available reserves. In that year, you had about, your general operating reserve for the city were about 90% of what is recommended. So you're pretty high up on what's recommended, but the GFOA really wants you to get to two months' coverage. And then also in the same letter, we state that your annual financial report, which is different than this caper, that is filed with the State Department of Financial Services, and that is in agreement with these audited financial statement balances. And then also in this letter, we're required to comment whether any prior findings were repeated from two years ago. The 2017 001 comment is the only condition that was a repeat from 15 and 16. And the other conditions that you'll see detailed there on pages 89 to 92, those all primarily resulted in, or may have been the result of transitions at the city, but a lot of those involve, you know, making sure that you have evidence documented, review and approval on various items, like your timesheets and your bank records, your payroll reports, all those you need to document, review and approval process that happens. And one of those items was regarding disposition of items on capital asset edit reports, you know, to make sure that's also followed through and that proper action is taken on the items that come up on that report. And then the report on page 84 is our test of your compliance with Florida statutes, section 218, 415. That's regarding investment, which again, statutes and the auditor general require us to do a separate examination of those. And after doing that, we saw that the city complied in all material respects with that statute. And then you did receive a separate letter, what they call required communications. Some of that information that's in there is, you know, discussed as I brought up some points today. It also points out that your most significant estimates and disclosures of the year are your pension-related balances, disclosures, and you had a restatement to collect some of those balances. Pledge revenues related to long-term debt, those are just typically important to point out, and a correction for prior year depreciation expense. That separate letter also discusses what adjustments were proposed and those were accepted by the city and posted to your votes. That's all I have. Do you have any questions? I'd be glad to answer those.
What's the, are there any, what's the effect of a timing of the audit as far as the submission of the audit? Is there any negative effect on that? Go ahead to that.
Everything was submitted, I guess, last Monday, October 1st. And to my knowledge, there's, you know, you're submitted for the GFOA certificate again. The fact that you would receive that. The State Department of Financial Services, that filing has been updated and accepted by that state entity. Your grant information has been filed with the OMB, they call it, and that has been accepted by them. To my knowledge, there has been...
So everything's back in compliance?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other question? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sure, you have the easy part, huh?
Yeah, I would just add one thing. Even though there's obviously been some changeover in personnel on both sides, but certainly with the city, the spirit of cooperation and professionalism has been evident and continues, and we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll go ahead at this time and I'll entertain a motion to accept the report. Second. Is the motion on the floor in a second? Is there any further discussion?
Question.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, item five of the agenda is a resolution designating the Hotel James as a historic site and to recommend this structure for inclusion in the National Register of Historic
A resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, designating the Hotel James as a local historic building and supporting and endorsing the application for nomination for listing in the National Register of Historic Places.
Motion on the floor in a second. Moving on, we're going for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, Mr. Miller. Thank you very much. Moving on to item six of the agenda, this is seven, the public hearing. The Planning Board's recommendation to annex 3201 Reed Street into rezone, Putnam County C-3 Commercial General to City C-2 Intensive Commercial. Most associations of Palaca, Joseph Donnelly Agent. Item A is the annexation ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 3201 Reed Street, located in Section 2, Township 10 South, Range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
So move. Second. Motion on the floor in a second by Commissioner Borland. On the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, rezoning ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County C-3 Commercial General to City C-2 Intensive Commercial for the following property, 3201 Reed Street, Section 2, Township 10 South, Range 26 East, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So move. Second.
So motion in a second on the floor. We're now going for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion?
Question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item seven, public hearing. Planning Board recommendation to annex 2408 Lee Terrace into rezone from Putnam County R-1A Residential Single Family to City R-1A Single Family Residential, Joseph and Angela Steel were applicants. Item A, annexation ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as 2408 Lee Terrace, located in Section 13, Township 10 South, Range 26 East. Public records of Putnam County, Florida, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca and providing an effective date.
So move.
Second. Motion on the floor in a second. We're now going for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll call the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Item B, rezoning ordinance, first reading.
An ordinance of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County R-1A Residential Single Family to City R-1A Single Family Residential for the following property, 2408 Lee Terrace, Section 13, Township 10 South, Range 26 East, providing for separability and providing an effective date.
So move. Second.
Second by Commissioner McCaskill. We're now going for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item eight of the agenda, City Manager and Administrative Reports. Mr. Lochnick, do you have anything for us today, sir?
One thing to note, starting...
They all have one of these.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, as you can see, documents before you today, we initiated a new agreement with the Putnam County Building Office. We are now sending our applicants for most building permits directly to the county. It's a more efficient screen line system for our applicants. Applications that require plan review will still be coming to us first for approval for compliance with the city. And then they'll be sent on to the county for the building permitting.
Thank you, sir. We got that posted on the website as well.
We are pushing it tonight. We just got this. I have to see how they lucked here this afternoon, and they worked all of this out.
Mr. Griffin.
Just a quick update on puddle water projects. As you're aware, you did approve a project tonight on the agenda. That includes the Palaca Heights phase up to basically the border of the Ravine Gardens. We did have a site visit with the Department of Economic Opportunity, which does another phase of Palaca Heights. They were out the day after we had the main line break on South 15th Street, which was within the project area that we submitted to them. And we're looking and packaging another project currently right now in the North Fifth, Sixth, and Seventh Street area, north of Reed Street. Just wanted to give you an update on that. Thank you.
We're going to finish that in the 270 days, 260 days, something like that.
We're talking about the Black Heights, sir?
Well, both phases. But you got two phases, right.
The phases that were awarded tonight should be able, we should be able to complete those, assuming we don't have any...
Right.
...one of those. I don't really want to say it.
We factored that in. It's all factored in, right?
To some extent, yes.
All right.
What the body they put about Highway 20. They got the curb from Carr Street.
Yes, ma'am. They're actually laying a section of potable line right now for us on Ninth Street. I believe last report I got, we're working from Carr back to the north. Once they get that in, they'll start working on some of the other utility relocates, and that will greenlight them to start on some of the stormwater improvements. It is a benefit to the city. DOT is funding approximately $300,000 worth of utility replacement in that corridor. So that's some good news.
I'd like to talk about two things quickly, a little bit, because I think a lot of people still don't understand what happened with the boil water issues. Just kind of explain to them how much of a nightmare it was.
It was unfortunate timing. As you're aware, we had to take the tank down for scheduled maintenance and cleaning.
The water tank, the water tower.
The elevated water tower. Yes, sir. At that time, there was a main line break because we were running off plant pressure. Some of the detail related to that is there is a valve that's calibrated to the pressure of the tower. It's not calibrated to a lower pressure for the distribution system. So you're going to have surges in pressure in the distribution system, and with pipes over 100 years old, they can't take those surges in pressure. Unfortunately, we had a 10-inch break. And the 10-inch broke, so much water was relieved from the system that we went below 20 PSI. And as mandated by DEP, once you go below 20 PSI, you have to issue a precautionary notice and do follow-up testing. Seven out of the 10 sites that were tested did come back with clearance. The other three, we did have to do follow-up testing. The tower, unfortunately, it did pass the first day, and on the second day, it did not pass. DEP did allow us to put the tower back online, considering that we were doing system-wide testing. We did get clearance Tuesday, and we lifted the notice.
And then the other thing was, just talk a little bit about how far we've come as it relates to infrastructure replacement over the last few years and where we're headed, particularly when we look at what we're doing with SRF.
I don't have exact numbers in front of me tonight, Mayor, but I can tell you that we've leveraged over $1.5 million in grant funding prior to the new rate structure that's been in place this year. We estimate bringing in conservatively anywhere from $800,000 to $1.1 million into the utility this year, which goes mostly to additional capital outlet, which is funding the match and additional debt service along with the CRA funds that are pledged for the debt service from the state revolving loan fund. When it's all said and done, if the city does end up pledging the full amount of debt service payment for these seven, I think it's 7.5 million loan, we could get another $1.2 million in principal forgiveness. That's essentially another $1.2 million grant. We have over 60 miles of lines to replace, but I believe in the past couple of years, you've put more projects in motion than have been done in the past 20 years. We are looking at the sanitary sewer system. There was some work done in the late 90s, some good work, some line projects, but we do have a lot of infiltration into our system, as you saw with the North Third Street project. There's a lot of good work happening, but there's a lot of projects that still need to be funded that we don't have enough funding yet.
And on top of that, putting in the projects, the stormwater drainage ponds, the cost share opportunities, when you, overall, millions of dollars that have been basically put back into the infrastructure with no real significant impact on the budget as a whole, because a lot of the money comes through either tax increment financing or through unsupplemented by efficiencies that we've created throughout operation.
The general rule of thumb, based upon the grants that we've received over the past eight years, is that for every dollar of CRA or general fund or utility, we're able to leverage another $3 in state and federal grants. And we're going to continue to do that if you'll allow us to. And it's the only way we're going to be able to dig ourselves out of this hole, unfortunately. And we presented a rate structure to you some months back, and I think it kind of highlighted how far behind we are. But I do want to thank you, at least from the staff's perspective, even down to the operators out in the field. They see you trying to move this ball forward and up and upwards. Thank you.
So I think the events from last week are really kind of evidence of what danger we've been in for a number of years, and we've just been blessed not to have anything extremely catastrophic in place. But I know the efforts and the plan to move this thing forward, really over the next decade, I think, just a realistic number, puts it in perspective. And I definitely want to thank you, mainly both, on the work that you've done in this commission for the vision, just moving, the movement is forward from an infrastructure standpoint. Most people don't understand it. They don't get it on a day-to-day basis. But when your water pressure changes, when the color of your water changes, and when you have those unfortunate events, you realize that there's something wrong. And we've weathered the storm, Palaca, for lack of any pun, but we've been able to weather the storm to be able to take millions out of reserves and put it into repairing infrastructure. And I think that would not have been done had it not been for the financial strategies that have been employed over the last few years, which have taken us from, you know, being in a financial strain, I think, to a position where we can actually start to make some things happen. And I appreciate your efforts in leading that charge, and we'll continue to support and move forward with that.
Thank you. I do want to leave you with one more thing. There are system components that should be in place at the plant that used to be there that are no longer in place that help mitigate these types of problems. And I will tell you that we are working with the engineers from Florida Rural Water right now on a couple of different pressure-reducing valve options with an inflow, inline flow meter that we have to install this year. So when the tank does have to be taken offline again, we're going to try and have some additional infrastructure in place to kind of mitigate this additional pressure that's placed on the aging system. But unfortunately, it wasn't funded and it wasn't scheduled. We're trying to get that pushed up.
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to say, and sitting in on some of the meetings and listening to all the...
and listening to all the work that's been done, some of us get it. We understand how hard staff's working, Jonathan, Mandy's mission, to try to fix a problem that was many, many, many years in the making. But I'm not sure that the public, as a whole, understand. When the boil water notice went out, and the restaurants had to put up signs on doors saying, "No beverages." I know that the Gas Authority, which is handling your water billing, got a couple of very irate calls that were directed at, unfortunately, the people that have nothing, no control over any aspect of it. And some of the calls weren't particularly kind or complimentary. People were frustrated. But I just wonder whether or not there might be an effort made to provide some summary to the public, either on the website or press release or something. Not a book, but a brief, just statement or explanation of what you have accomplished in the last few years, what you've got on the table for the future. And it isn't, it is for the purpose of honestly getting the public some information about a problem that's been here for a long time. I mean, 100 years, 110 years, whatever, pipes are 30, 130 years. And it's, I don't call it blowing your own horn or anything of the nature. I just think that maybe the public can be more understanding if they do in fact understand and are informed of the efforts that are being made, so.
And I think, just to piggyback on what Attorney Holmes stated, I think we should come up with another strategy to better disseminate information. Of course, we know, putting it on the website. But for me, I would like us to see about possibly having a visual as far as possibly you talking. A lot of times, or if not you, somebody else. A lot of times, just to be honest, when people are faced with putting stuff in front of them, the last thing they want to do is read. So, we want to put it out in a method that we can accommodate everyone. So, I think that'll give us a facelip. I think that'll put us on the cutting edge of what we really want to do as far as we're taking the city forward. So, I'd like to see another method outside of just posting, you know, on the website.
I think a good video, something like a video, like what Jonathan is doing now, moving that out, as well as maybe a visit to different locations in the city. We got different places, you know. And maybe have some of those set up, maybe either monthly or quarterly or something along those lines. But that'll be based on however they want. But it's just a recommendation.
I was going to say to do a video and then ask all these folks that we have coming in here and looking at what we do with organizations to maybe once every couple of months or every three months, have a little blip in there on what we're doing.
But people's attention span, all these sorts of things, is short. You can put a long video on there, and nobody's going to watch it. It's going to have to, you're going to have to put something out there that's short.
Yeah.
And I think the school district does a really good job getting that information out with their videos. They're no longer in one minute, two minutes max. And it's just hitting the highlights. And I mean, again, when we do a good job at posting things on social media or on the website, but what about those individuals that doesn't necessarily have Facebook or have access to the internet? Again, we have to be, and we have to make sure that we accommodate or at least get the word out to as many people as possible.
So, I'm glad you brought that up. What you have before you was the first installment of bill inserts. This one went out to every single customer.
Right.
Again, it's a little bit more detailed, because we want to put the information out there. And I think some of the comments and suggestions that you're making and maybe getting some smaller excerpts out through different media channels are some really good ideas. We may look to a few of you to kind of help us hone that strategy. I don't have the second insert in front of me. It's in draft format, but it actually details every single phase that's planned for the next five years, and kind of gives a visual on the percentage of the amount of lines that need to be replaced, the visual on the condition of the lines. But I will gladly get that to the City Manager tomorrow to distribute to you. We plan on sending that to every single customer. And again, if you have any suggestions on how maybe to go out through different channels, like Facebook and radio station, I'd gladly think of it.
First, why not?
Jonathan, do you know where the majority of the stuff you put in the bill goes?
Hey, I kept mine. I'm proud of it.
Well, it's great. I'm just saying, if it's not, if people aren't reading it, the information isn't getting there.
Something else we used during the, something else that we used during the last crisis, Palaca, in their term, is reverse knowledge. And create ways to get communications out in different ways. And so, those are additional opportunities that are out there. But I think Mandy has a comment, and then we'll sum it up.
Yeah, I just wanted to state that one of the functions of the new assistant position under me will be to help keep things in the forefront on social media. So, when things like this happen, we'll have somebody who's actually supposed to be going on Facebook and keeping the public informed.
But there's another phase of this, and I think we missed it. And one of the reasons that we had the conversation about the PIO was because we don't really do a good job in telling the story to the people so that they understand what the short-term, what the successes have been. But also, when it's time to disseminate information, whether that's a storm event or any other place, if we have that person who is designated to providing the information to the public as it, with activities that are happening throughout the city. And that's one reason that we, last year, we allocated $25,000 for that position and trying to have that in place just to start to get that out there. Because when you've got someone, that's their only function, is to disseminate information. Because there's only so many times that you can get all of us to put it on our Facebook, you know, because Betsy's circle is different from mine and Commissioner Kemples or anybody else is that we actually use our own Facebook pages as ways to get information out to people, even during storms. When, if we got that central place where people know they can go get all the information, that changes it. And so, we can do those things, but we don't do it well. And no matter how we continually try to do that, along with having other duties, we're not going to do it well.
You know, I think you have to be imaginative. And for instance, think about things like a booth at a festival. Think about things like a booth at the flying. I mean, just to pique people's interest in the fact that you're doing something. It's cool to explain things to people when the main water line breaks. But that's not really what I'm talking about. I'm talking about informing them of what all you have done and what you're doing to fix this big problem in a short, sweet way that they'll listen to for a few minutes. And then if they want to inquire further, they can look at all the catalogs and inserts that you want to. But most people are like me and you and everybody else. You're busy, and the bill comes in, and you look at the bill and pay it, and stuff that's in the bill, in the rest of the envelope, you go to the trash can. At least that's the way it is with them. Maybe not. Maybe you read everything that's in there.
Mayor, can I say, I got this invitation from a class that's having a class reunion.
1964.
And, yeah, I think the two of us have been invited. And I don't know if anybody else. But I think as we go and speak at different places, churches ask us to come and stuff, that we, if we insert it and kind of pump it up a little bit, and act as those ambassadors. Because somebody is always calling you to come in and have something to say. And I think maybe that would be a way that we need to put on our radar that we can help a little bit more. Or just, I stop on the street and talk to people and tell them what we're doing sometime. And just, that one-on-one communication, they listen to you when you get them. It's not a whole lot of people, because if you call a meeting or they ask you to come sometime, you go. And there's two or three people there, five people. If you're getting the message out, it's good. But on a one-to-one basis, try to do it when we have all these people calling up to come to these different affairs that they have.
All the other projects?
Just the riverfront projects.
Well, the Vault of Storm project has completed, with the exception of the clock tower. We're working on some, closing some loose ends on some electrical projects and lighting projects on the riverfront. We'll have a formal project update out to you at the next meeting with Mandy, assuming some due duties. She hasn't had a chance to really update the spreadsheet in the past couple of weeks. So, is there any specific project that anybody would like an update on? North Third Sewer is moving along. There'll be a change order coming before you to resurface the roads in the vicinity of that, so that the historic district can re-brick some roads. Any questions?
Just, if you got it electronically, I mean, that'd be great. Kind of, to keep us kind of posted as to if the statuses are updated. I think that'll probably serve the purpose. In case if people ask questions or, you know, about a certain project, and we kind of understand, no hogs coming along, whatever, so.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief.
Good evening again. Just to keep you updated, we got a call yesterday from the state of Florida about sending some help to the people out in that Panhandle. I got with Chief Romey, and to kind of keep things simple, they had committed to sending a couple of people out. And I said, "We didn't send a couple of people out," so it really didn't hurt either one of our services. They pulled their guys up today. They had a special mission for them to go to Mexico Beach, because they're having some serious fire-related issues in Mexico Beach. So, they were looking for a tanker task force, which is a particular piece of apparatus that we don't have. So, they're sending that. And they're going to meet the responders out of Clay County tomorrow at 3:01 in I-10, and they'll make their way to Mexico Beach. I would assume we'll probably get the call probably tomorrow to send some resources out to those folks. It's probably going to be a part of an engine task force. We'll meet up with some other crews, probably fly over Clay County St. John's and send them out there for an unknown period of time, probably close to a week. They told us to have our guys packed up for a minimum of six days, which just, let everybody know, is 100% reimbursable when it comes from the state. But like I looked at it, I said, "You know what? Then people were, it would have happened here, and we didn't want to help." They just sent it to us. So, I think that's the proper thing to do, is to send out the help of those folks, because they're in a desperate need right now. Watching those aerial footage and stuff of that place there was absolutely horrific. So, just keep those folks, your thoughts and prayers as they're going through a really tough time out there. The other thing that was really cool this morning was I got up early. I just woke up this morning, and I said, "Let me go check out this FLW Bass Tour that came to Palaca." And watching 150 boats launch, and our boat docked down there, and just take off a fish tournament here was just a really cool deal. So, that's just making sure the things that are actually happening here. Everybody out there on the street this morning was in a great mood. You know, the anglers couldn't, you know, and the gentleman from the FLW tour.
Alan.
Alan said, how great his experience has been with, you know, with working with the local Chamber of Commerce and the city of Palaca and everybody. He said, "It's just second to none what they've seen." So, they were extremely happy with the city of Palaca. So, it all looked really, really good. They were, like I said, hopefully I'll get down there tomorrow, because he wanted us to kind of make a show down there, you know, around the waiting times. But other than that, it was a really good week. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Chief Shaw. It's you.
No craft, just report, right?
No, no. Much better. We've got good business, it's been run by a gifted aircraft mechanic, one of Warren Cilliers. He makes hangar W-3 at the airport, which is the hangar that we have the food operation in at the flying, if you know where that one is. And then some significant happen this past weekend. They won the Red Bull race at the Indianapolis Speedway in Indiana. They came in first place. The pilot and their team is now in first place. And this is a picture of the airplane. The gentleman in the white shirt is Warren Cilliers. And I apologize for not having...
Air race, Red Bull air race.
Red Bull air race.
My goodness.
And I have sent this video, there's a one-minute video that recaps the season right now. But this is the thing about it, this airplane won in Indianapolis on Sunday. And I took this picture this morning out of the airport.
We have that plane, right?
So, it's really cool. So, when you get your email...
So, pile-on race, John?
It's pile-on.
About 40 or 50 feet.
About that range.
That's a radical, that's a radical race.
That they were going, so low to the ground.
Radical.
I said, they're flying low, and they go up through...
Wow.
There'd be a corner with the car, but they go up through.
They've had, I think they had four or five races this year so far. They started the season in Dubai, Budapest, Hungary, Austria.
It's international field, too.
International.
All over Japan.
And wow, the last race, the rest of the season, is next month at Texas Motor Speedway in Fort Worth. So, we certainly hope Michael Julian pulls it out. But if you get a chance, stop in and see...
What's the name of that company?
Cilliers Aviation is the name of the company.
I'm sure the newspaper would be interested in printing something positive about Palaca, Florida, wouldn't they?
But again, the same kind of stuff you need your PIO.
I'm stepping in. I actually took the video by the newspaper. It took me three trips.
They won't print the video.
There's something delicate about it. When I showed the video to the new editor, he told me that the best man at his wedding just happens to be the president of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. And he had heard about this race from his friends before. So, I think we're going to get a news article out of it. I haven't been out in the airport yet.
There's no way to put a video on a newspaper.
But if you get a chance, please stop in and see Mr. Cilliers. A great, very well-respected mechanic, when you're trusted with, you know, reading flight controls for airplanes that operate that close to the ground and in that dynamic of a situation.
And our reporter's been doing a great job, just for the record.
Very good, very good. I just want to tell you about that, and thank you.
Alright, thank you. Ms. Robinson, is she back there?
Yes, she is.
Just hiding back there. Let's see that door. She's waving her report. It looks like Ms. Becker. You got a report for us?
No. Good evening. I wanted to quickly say that if you look into your capper, Ms. Robinson was able to come out tonight and give a lot of details that probably jumbled together for you. If you have any questions, please feel free to call me or email me, ask me. We've addressed, all of the findings have either been addressed currently or are in the process of being addressed. It's a lot to do with implementing controls, cleaning. There's some accounting, gymnastics, that needed to be cleaned up a little bit. So, we, with the help of the auditors this year, we have looked at some things. We brought attention to some of the items, which ultimately led to a couple of findings. But really, it's all about getting the controls in place, and we're in a good, we're making progress. So, good report on that. We've scheduled the fiscal year 1718 audit to begin with CRA. I told them that it was unacceptable to have it any later than March 31st this year. So, I mean, it's a good goal to have. June 30th is the deadline for the state. So, you know, kind of put a little pressure on them. Let's see, and we will have to go out for an RFD, which will likely have to be done around January, February to get some good interest. This is the last year of their engagement letter, so we just naturally have to go back out. And if you see in your consent items, we have been, as department heads, reviewing policy and procedures. We kind of talked about this earlier with you all, mentioned it, and with the help of Ms. Robinson. We want to make this become a regular item on your agenda every month. We are going to be reviewing the policies. Even if there are no revisions to them, we will at least read through them, make sure we all understand them, and make sure that they're current with the laws. The, you know, everything's ever-changing, so we want to make sure that we review that. So, I think within a couple of years, or a year and a half, we would be able to review the whole book and then start over all over again, implement some new policies, that sort of thing, get it current, so.
On our agenda, I hope.
No. No, no, no. It would just be consent if we had any changes or adoptions. It would just be consent if we had any changes or adoptions. But other than that, we, we internally are gonna be reviewing everything.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Drickers? Sorry, Mr. Holmes?
Good day.
Ms. Turner?
We had a new employee start, because we said goodbye to one employee and hello to another. We said goodbye to Ms. Karen Geraliar, who is a building and zoning clerk. Her last day was yesterday, and we brought on a new employee, Ms. Patty Ryan. She has four years of experience as a building and zoning permit clerk with the county. She's worked their planning board, and so we're glad to welcome her aboard. We want to thank Chief Grimes for loaning us Ms. Sophia Smith, who has been down here with the training and helping out with training the new employees, and she's also backing up on building and zoning procedures, policies. So we'll have some depth in that department. I distributed the Take the Healthy Road Drive Through Flu Vaccines flyer to everyone. You can literally drive through, put your arm out the window, and get a flu vaccine.
That's good.
So that's going to be, that's a first for Putnam County. Our, our department's helping out in that. It's gonna be at Placa High School, Interlochen High School, and Crescent City High School on the 19th, which is the same day that we have citywide safety training scheduled. We would like for the commissioners to all attend that, too. I've sent emails out on all of that, so just tell me if you want to come, in the morning session or the afternoon session, and we'll have our safety luncheon on the, on the 19th also. And you've already been updated on the building permit review process, the board of county commissioners adopted that interlocal agreement on Tuesday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question mark?
All right. Just want to, I want to thank everybody for all the awesome, wonderful work they've been doing, especially as it related to our boil water notices that had to go out. Great job with Betsy, sending those communications out. You can't over-communicate when it comes to stuff like that. Also, all the great work that Jonathan and his crew did, that's awesome job, and everybody else who I might not mention, awesome job. Kudos to our Placa team. Just, again, I want to thank, oh, Kaylee as well, Kaylee, she's, she's the superintendent, so she's stayed up many nights, working late nights and different things of that nature, so I want to say that to her as well. The audits, 2017-01, that was one that was a repeat. Need to take a look at that one and understand what we need to do to get those cleaned up a little bit, if it was repeated, or something that was not completed, and just need to look and see why that one wasn't done. See if it was something within our control. The other thing we, we have is the permit process. I think that's an awesome job, Betsy, you've been working with the county, as well as Mr. Laika. Thank him for all the wonderful work he's doing. But these are the kind of things that make him Placa look very, very good. We're working to be efficiently and effective, and that's what we're doing. The other thing is, we have a waterline break, and under doing normal maintenance, under normal maintenance, we, our infrastructure is, has deteriorated, and again, that's why I avoid for this particular package to go through, so that my vote went toward helping to improve the infrastructure. So with that being said, I think I said enough, I'm pass the rest of my time on, to the rest of me.
You don't have any more time. Question mark, Captain? Vice Mayor?
I would like for us, this, in the next few months, to start back on our business incubator. I think now that we have new businesses and people coming in doing business, that it might help us, and they're selling some of the properties in the downtown area, that would help us. Martin Marsh, with the St. Mark's Episcopal Church, is willing to help us get connected up, with the Episcopal diocesan who helped start the one in Jacksonville, and I'd like for us to do that. The second thing is, this past week, we very, one of the people who worked very hard to get the riverboat here, and I would like to ask that, there's a couple of people that were on that committee, that traveled and did everything, that if we could see if something could be named after them, one of the diocesan, or something, and I want to put that on the radar, that's all I have.
One thing that I have, tomorrow, there is a movie in the park. It is co-sponsored with the Putnam County Parks and Rec, pal, and the Putnam County School District Library Assistant. It's tomorrow at 7:30 at the John Thiel Bold Sports Complex. Free popcorn, beverages, only thing they're asking is that you bring your chair or your blanket.
What, what's the?
The movie is COCO. 7:30.
Can I, can I tell you all that there was a movie made here, and people stayed in that little hotel over on the corner? Charlton Heston was in it. It was called Naked Jungle. It might be interesting to, to see and bring it back sometime when we're doing a movie in the park.
Is that a beach with a movie in it? Is it all right?
No, it was. No, it was, it was about ants that. It was about ants that, that.
They started turning.
They just cleared, they ate everything in their paths, and, and the people struggling to save the area from it. In the 50s, they didn't have that bad of movies, I don't think. They couldn't show immediately.
That's all. Is there a PYP event this weekend?
There is. There is the Craft Beer Festival on Saturday that PYP is hosting, along with, is it Revitalized?
Historic Placa.
Historic Placa. And so the event is from 12, 12, 1 to 5. Please join. Mr. Griffith has put in a lot of work. This is, this is his event for PYP.
PYP stands for?
Yeah, Placa Young Professionals. And so come out, I will be there volunteering my time.
Good job. If you want any more information, don't ask Logan Becker.
I'm doing good, taking my cues, but Mr. Griffith would be able to help you. You can buy tickets for it.
Tickets are still available.
Yes, yes. It's been bright. It's been bright.
How much do they cost?
Thirty-five.
You sure?
I do know that.
Drink of conscience.
I purchased my own ticket. Thirty-five.
Probably when it was 25. It went up last weekend.
It's going up?
It went up last weekend.
But there's apparently a lot of vendors showing up, so, with 30 food trucks.
It's the only place in the world you did this live for the commissioner. Our quarter be brief. For those who do not know, got a message this week from Senator Nelson's office that this city was awarded a grant for, from the National Park Services for $199,500 for the Booker Park Project. That grant was kind of a, it was a quick brainchild to move that project forward, and we were grateful for that award, and we definitely thank Senator Nelson's office for the help that they gave us as well, in making sure that we got the award to make the, to make the sports complex a reality. And so again, another $199,000 that comes to the city for that project. And so we are, we're definitely looking forward to that, and looking forward to the match opportunities that we have with that grant. Outside of that, we are moving forward in the city. We're still laughing, and we are still surviving. We've been blessed to miss this storm incident. I want to thank everybody on the emergency operations team for your efforts. People really don't know what goes into preparation for a storm, whether it's a real event, or it's, or we're blessed that it doesn't occur. But those meetings start, and they continue on throughout the day, so you'll find yourselves in four or five meetings continuously. And so I definitely, hats off to our team for the efforts, hats off to the commissioners who got an opportunity to come in and be a part of the team and sit in on those state and national regional calls. And so with that being said, we will continue to pray for Commissioner McCaslin and her family during this, this, this time of bereavement. But we will also continue to lift her up and support her in all that's going on. And so we want to make sure that we shower her with love during this time. If there's nothing else from me, we're standard adjournments.